Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, everyone. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And good morning, everyone. This is the last meeting of the year for the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners for December 18th, 2019. Santa's getting ready to come to town. Let's see, our inspirational word for the day, "An honest answer is a true sign of friendship." And we have our dog this morning.
Good morning. Jose, Christmas present for you. This is kennel number two. Pit bull mix, she's probably two to three years old. Really good personality. We have 21 other dogs, so come on in, come and get them. Jose, don't say I never gave you anything.
Thank you very much. Well, the first thing we have this morning is a presentation. I'd asked our Lorraine County Auditor to come in and give us an update because there's some alarming news that I think the whole county and the whole community needs to know. Everyone from our local governments to our community college, our libraries, to our school districts. And it's concerning, the NEXUS Pipeline, as you're all familiar with. That project has been completed, and the NEXUS Gas Transmission Pipeline is in place now. We were told when presentations are being made to the community that this was going to be generating overall throughout Ohio, and I believe the 14 counties, that impacts somewhere around $83 million in the first year of estimated revenue on the tax rolls. And here in Lorraine County, we were originally told that was going to be somewhere in the neighborhood about nine and a half million. Well, now, there's brand-new pipe in the ground. It certainly hasn't depreciated by any means, being totally new. And the company is already in Columbus appealing with the public utility property value with the Ohio Department of Taxation, saying, hey, we want this greatly reduced, I think to the tune of almost 38%. But I've asked our auditor to come in because I think it's important for the community to know, I'm sorry to say we don't have members of the media here this morning, but it's important for the community to know the impact this is going to have on our schools and our county and our communities. And I know you're working vigorously on this, and just wanted to see if you could give the whole county, I guess, an update on where we're at and what it's looking like.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Craig.
Thank you for inviting me to the meeting today. I think I brought this issue up about a week and a half ago at the Community Alliance Session. There's information that we had really just received a day before that meeting. A few things have occurred really in the last 10 days, that we've had a number of conference calls with my Auditor's Association regarding this. We actually had a contingency set from our association, went down and met with the Tax Commissioner regarding this issue. And to give you a little background, a little history on this, a couple of years ago, our office started getting a lot of phone calls about the pipeline, mostly from homeowners saying, hey, this is going to harm my value, what's it going to do, you know, those types of things. Again, until we get some sales, then really we can get a judgment there. Then we go forward a little bit, and now all of a sudden, you know, the NEXUS people come along and say, we're going to give you X amount of dollars for the next five years, here's our guarantee. And Commissioner, you mentioned, it was about $7.3 million, I think for the, about $7.3 million, first year they're saying, we're going to give to Lorraine County, put into the economy, provide to the school districts, all the different subdivisions. And over a five-year period, that was going to come up to $34 million. So all of a sudden, now I'm starting to get calls from the townships, their fiscal people, and the other school treasurers, hey, when's that money going to come in? It's, well, we have to get it on the books. It has to actually be in the ground, which then did actually occur here in 2019. Now, all of a sudden, everybody's basing their budgets, basing their spending, going forward. I know I've talked to the fiscal officer from Camden Township, who's working on a number of issues in Camden, where we have the Green Circle case pending, but they're also looking to build a possibly fire station. So they're looking at this revenue, you know, we need this money to do this project. And they're not unique. Everyone is looking to, you know, what are they going to do with these funds? So all of a sudden, we get the information in first week of October at the Public Utility Information from Columbus. It was actually a $110,474,000 value, which worked out to be approximately $9.5 million. It's going to get put into the economy here in Lorraine County. And then all the political subdivisions were going to have the money accordingly. Well, in the meantime, this process, we get the values. I have to now work on rates. That's one of the big jobs I have to do in my office. I sit down with my Settlement Department, try to protect the emergency and bond rates. Debt's going to be met, and emergencies are going to receive the money that they were guaranteed to get. Now, I'm basing my decision on that value, along with every other county. And again, you mentioned there's 14 counties affected by this pipeline. There's another pipeline in Ohio, the Rover Pipeline, they've cut their values by 50% in their first year. Seems to be a little trend.
Right.
So, again, our associations become very active because we know what this will mean. So in the meantime, we set our rates, emergency rates, bond rates, for especially the four school districts that are really affected, Fireland School District, Midview School District, Oberlin, those in particular were their emergencies. Based on this new value, they might not meet that obligation. So we've been in close contact with all the treasurers as much as possible. In fact, I know even here at the county level with Casey from the Budget Department, because it will affect county budgets. You know, the worst being hit could be Midview School District. They're looking at, they have two emergencies. But based on the original value filed, they were going to, they're going to lose now potentially $118,000 for these two levies. They have to find that money now. They're going to have to pull it from somewhere else. And this is a position that these districts have been put in, and not just in Lorraine County, but throughout the other 14 counties, has really serious issues. And that's where our Auditor's Association has gotten involved. And that's why we went down to see the Tax Commissioner, because as soon as we found out, our rates were already done. I called Columbus, said, hey, we need to make an adjustment. We were told, no, can't do it. So we elevated that to the Tax Commissioner. Nope, won't do it. So we have a problem here, and we're going to have this problem each and every year. So I know our association, we're going to look on maybe a long-term solution, whether it's maybe these appeals are filed too late, so we need this information sooner. But I really would like to work with our legislators. I know our association's going to try to make contact. Hopefully, maybe the Commissioners' Association can become involved, because this will be an ongoing issue. And just in the first year alone, they made a promise, can't keep the promise. Do we think next year will be better? Probably not. So I did want to make sure that you were aware of this, and again, I want to thank Mr. Lundey for talking. Real quickly, I mentioned the county as an instance, where we were supposed to get $1.6 million. Again, not just general fund or debt service, but all the county levies, MRDD, Matt Park, Child Services. Initially, we were supposed to get $1.6 million. Based on this new appeal, $1 million, $641,000 difference. Yeah, so that's the impact that we are basing off of this new value. So it's going to create problems for budgets. Some budgets might be able to absorb, but there are some very razor-thin budgets. Those are the ones we're going to have some problems with. Again, like I said, with emergencies, definitely an issue.
You mentioned there was another pipeline that also did an appeal in the first year. Were they successful in their appeal?
It's going on also this year.
Oh, it's the same, okay.
Yeah, that was what originally started triggering a lot of things, because Rover, it's called the Rover Pipeline, I know it runs through Wayne County, it's all the southern parts of the state. I believe there might be 16, 16 or 18 counties affected by that one. There's a couple of counties that are, I think Rover's not in Lorraine County, but I also know the NEXUS line runs through some other counties that Rover's also in. They're going to get a double hit. So they want to cut theirs by 50%, NEXUS is only 38%,
Still.
which is highly significant. So we'll see. Now, in our conversations with Columbus, with the Tax Commissioner, they feel that they can defend the initial value, but we've seen a lot of decisions come out of Columbus that usually do not favor taxpayers or us. So unfortunately, I'm almost conditioned to say the company's going to win.
Wow.
Hate to go there.
Well, and wasn't there a lot of community opposition to putting, to laying that pipeline in those communities?
There absolutely was.
So it's like a bait and switch, almost.
Well, again, and I think I provided to Commissioner Lundey yesterday, the, one of the documents that was provided, and throughout their different counties that the NEXUS said they were going to generate for everyone.
Right.
And that was part of their presentation. And if I recall, one of the meetings at the college that I attended, and I know Commissioner Lundey, and then at that time Commissioner Kahlo were there, and asked a lot of very good questions to those representatives about the revenues that were supposed to come into the county, what they were representing. And we all kind of looked at each other, it's just not going to happen. And I think they were called out at that time. And now, now the proof's kind of here. They really said one thing, and now all of a sudden, oh, we're going to do something else once we're in.
Yeah. Yeah, this document here that you still had in your files from one of those meetings showed that they were first-year estimated revenue over the counties. NEXUS was claiming it would be $83.7 million in tax revenue. You know, so some of the communities who probably had apprehensive, were thinking, well, this is good, you know, it's going to come back to a lot of communities, help a lot of communities. There's new pipe in the ground, the pipe's probably still warm or cold, or whatever the pipe is, and all of a sudden now, they're trying to get a reduction of 38%. And that's, I mean, it's just simply not acceptable. As I told you the other day on the phone, you know, I know that the auditor's kind of leading the charge, but there's any way that we can certainly help. And I would think if all these counties collectively came together and said, you know, this is just not something we're going to stand for. But I think it's also important to point out the way that the system is set up, where had they not appealed, then we would not have had the opportunity to appeal, correct?
Right, there is, and this is something I learned through our process we had through NRG a couple of years ago, that auditors, we normally have the right to appeal the values, like any other taxpayer. So however, with public utility, we do not have that same right.
Right.
Until the public utility appeals. And I know our association, we've kind of kicked the idea around, maybe we as an association may even follow this up with an appeal, because now that door is open for us to do so.
Good.
So that might be an option. You know, one of the big things, though, as we've discussed, and I even know my NRG case took how many years to finally come to a settlement, and that's one of the problems, just going through this appeal process, although the state has committed to handling this quickly, you know, and everybody says, well, what's quickly? Six months, a year, two years? So that's part of that timeframe. So, but normally, it might be a year, you know, before some type of determination comes out. Then the appeals begin.
What do they do in the meantime? Are they paying the rate that they were originally assessed for?
They have the right, like any other taxpayer, to pay what they feel they owe. So they can short pay, which then, money doesn't come in. However, if they pay, and then they win the appeal, now you're looking at a large refund. So it's kind of like, which way do you go with that? I would guess I'll probably short pay, but which, hopefully then we'll get our money down the road, but that could be two, three, four years from now.
And we're short, then we're short on all of the budgets that are relying upon it, correct?
Yeah. And then what happens next year when the filings occur? Is it an appeal? And we've just seen, it can take a number of years before anything gets settled. I believe there was one county, they had a similar appeal, it went like six years. So, you know, and each and every year. I mentioned my Green Circle case. We have four or five years already in waiting for the Court of Appeals to actually make a determination on that. This is how long some of these cases can go on. So this can have an effect for a number of years.
Yeah, and just, so everybody knows that some of these losses, I think Craig, you already pointed out, Lorraine County, this is the difference between the original estimated revenue and then the appealed estimated revenue. So there'd be a loss of $641,000, I'm rounding everything to round numbers, for Lorraine County, $641,000. Here's the school districts, and remember, these school districts have to put together a five-year
Forecast.
Plan, five-year forecast. So this really greatly impacts them. Keystone would lose, let's see, $636,000. Midview, $613,000. Oberlin, $744,000. So JBS, $104,000.
A year.
And that's
Well, for this coming year, based upon the original filing
Exactly.
and what the appeal is. Next year, new numbers. But that's for this year alone.
Right.
One year.
So what are they accrediting or attributing the devaluation to?
I do actually, my association did actually email me the filing
Okay.
for reassessment, and it's a pretty lengthy
Of course.
But again, obsolescence, appreciation, you know, what we hear quite a bit.
Right.
It's not worth it anymore. It's one year old, not even a year old. It's already, well, it's just not good anymore. So you hear that. So that's part of what
And am I correct, typically, values actually go up in the first early years?
Well, there certainly shouldn't be a whole lot of depreciation or obsolescence
Right, or obsolescence, yeah.
Especially the obsolescence part, I mean, it's
Correct.
Just put in the ground. So, and definitely in a case like this, I mean, the revenue's coming in, it's there. So again, we're going to look at our options of a potential appeal ourselves, and kind of get some guidance from our legal counsel at the association.
The value's not just about the pipe in the ground, it's about how much money they're making on the pipe, too.
Revenue.
Well, you have the usage, and how much cubic, you know, yards or feet are going through that pipe. It's very complex.
Right.
And I learned a lot from the NRG case, it's not like a house.
Right, exactly.
But there's a lot involved, yes.
You can also learn a lot based upon timing. My understanding is they filed their, what, appeal, was that the day before Thanksgiving?
Yeah, it was the day before Thanksgiving
Interesting.
down in Columbus. Again, we actually certified at the Budget Commission the rates on that Monday following Thanksgiving. I found out Wednesday late through the rumor mill that this was going on, and our rates were already down in Columbus. And Columbus said, oh, we mailed it to you on Monday. I didn't get it till Friday. It would have been nice if they had told us when they were actually notified, then we might have been able to make some adjustments, because we do consider, you know, these types of actions, you know, to try to protect the emergencies.
Sure.
And again, that's where we made our appeal, phone calls to people in Columbus, they said, no. We certified, it's done.
Well, you know, this is, we wanted you here today, I guess, to inform the public. You know, we see these situations surface quite often, unfortunately, there are some good corporate citizens, and there are some corporations that operate in the county. And this is obviously not the behavior of a good corporate citizen. So we're very troubled by it, alarmed by it. I know you're going to work on it, as I've said before. I'm sure this board will be willing to support you in any way necessary, and especially if we can get the other counties together and make sure that we, make sure that we challenge this. But, you know, this is what goes on in Columbus, folks. You got to pay attention to what goes on down there. It's amazing, the games that are played. And, you know, people down there claim that they're looking out for the community back home, and these shenanigans go on. Corporations get a lot of things that they want in Columbus. The utility companies especially get pretty much almost everything that they want down there. And this is why we've got to stay on, on top of it. They were no friends of mine when I was down there, and they continue to play the games. But we will have follow-up conversations with NEXUS based upon what was promised, and now the big turnaround.
Again, it's about fairness.
Right.
Nobody wants to pay taxes. Nobody enjoys that. But it's our process we have. Just pay your fair share. And again, if they're not paying, somebody else is, which is us.
It's going to be us.
It gets passed on to us. And that's why we're so adamant to try to say, no, this is just not right.
Correct.
And we're trying to protect everybody.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate if you would forward the information to me, they're madder, and I will take it down to the County Commissioners' Association in my next meeting, and take it up with them, too, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
She's got a lot of muscle now, she's on the executive committee.
I know, look out.
Not that she didn't have before.
That could be good timing.
So, okay. Yeah, Madam Clerk, we can move to our agenda.
All right. Investments?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Transfers?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Advances?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Travel?
So move.
Was there travel? I don't think there was travel.
I think there was one.
Well, I think it was one, if I recall.
And it was small, I think.
It would have been on a green sheet. I don't think we had a travel.
Maybe you're right. I don't see a green sheet.
No, there was no travel.
Okay.
We had one requisition.
Yeah.
That's what we're thinking. One of, okay.
All right, so there was no travel for today. Okay, bills?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Okay. Number eight, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
County Administrator Jim Cordez, good morning.
Good morning, sir. We do have a few personnel issues, some board appointments, some potential hires, 911, maintenance, collection center, also two pending legal matters, and one property sale and purchase matter. So all of those subjects are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, when we go into executive session, we discuss those matters that I've explained.
Okay. Excuse me. Number nine, authorize county administrator to provide and execute all necessary documents effective December 19, 2019, through December 31 of 2019, for the year-end closed activity, including but not limited to transfers, advances, repayments, appropriations, requisitions, travel, bills, payroll-related transactions, and payments, and all other necessary and urgent documents.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Number 10, approve the 2020 special revenue annual appropriation.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Number 11, approve the 2020 general fund budget.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we want to have Casey come up and?
Yeah, but I wanted to, can you get into that? I just want to go back to 10 first.
Sure.
I have a question to Casey when he's up here on
Sure.
Okay.
Casey, if you'll come on up. Yeah, I would, you know, just say with this new budget, we believe it's a responsible budget. Obviously, we had some pay increases impacting it, which is a good thing for our employees. They much deserve it. And also, I think it's also important for us to point out that this budget was impacted by the loss of the Medicaid Managed Care Organization sales tax. That
Well, this is the first one impacting.
Right, the first impact. So that's, and the reason for that is that normally, that designated portion of the sales tax that goes to the jail may have brought in, what, nine and a half or 10 million? So automatically, that brought in about $2 million less as a result of the MCO sales tax going away. So we had to backfill that. The state managed to help us with that, I think, for a one- or two-year window of time, at least a portion of it. So, and then also, we have the lovely 27 pays, which government always cringes when they have the extra pay during a year. But, so, you know, those two factors alone, whether it's backfilling the MCO and the additional pay is over $3 million alone there for the change in the budget from the previous year, so.
We also gave all the departments a 1% increase
Right.
for their supply accounts, since that has not been increased in, I don't even think since I've been here, we've increased the supply account, so.
Across the board, yeah.
We've done, we've done here and there, but it needed to be serviced. Everything's gone up in price.
For sure.
The, but I want to back up to number 11 on the special revenue.
Okay.
It's number 10.
10.
Is that, is that where the DTF is? Did we talk to them about what we talked about? About the need to get ready to pay debt service and all those things out of that?
I have not had a conversation with
And then
Want to hold off on that?
Yeah, with regard to number 10, I mean, that, there's, I can't go, I can't recommend going forward with that. We need to, we need to look at, we can take all that spending and get it ready to go to finance, and it's not built into that budget.
Okay. Do you want to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, I'm just, I just now, I'm looking, I just got, what is it, yesterday, I think you sent this over to me on all of that. So I, I mean, I don't mind making it temporary or something until, until we get, we have more dialogue, but
Do you want to just do a quarterly temporary budget?
That could work, in the first quarter, so we can, but I definitely got to work through some issues here, because I got temporary financing over there on construction projects, and I need to go to permanent financing, and it's nowhere in this budget.
Can we make amendment to reflect that the 2020 special revenue annual appropriation would be a quarterly temporary budget?
We could do that. I just don't want Old Mother Hubbard to go to the cupboard and have, you know, nae ability to pay our debt service, so, you know, I, we've been scrambling on this budget towards the end of the year with some things that were a little unique.
Right.
So I want to, I just want to make sure that we, we know what we're doing. So I want to, I just want to make sure that we, we know what we're doing. That's the only one that's really concerning me right now. I've straightened out the other issues with the 911 and so forth. I don't know. But if you make it just, at least just either all of them or just that one...
Why don't we just do all of them and make it simple?
And then we'll come back and...
Right.
Okay, great. If you want to amend, that'd be great. Sorry, I got to it a little late here.
That's okay.
Okay. So that's for 10 and 11?
No, just 10.
10.
We're just talking about 10 right now.
Right.
Okay. Then that'll be my motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Going to discuss 11 as well, too? Anything else you need?
Yeah, if you'd like to. I, you pretty well explained it.
We explained it. I think we're covered.
This harkens back to when the local governments' shares shifted.
Sure.
And within a period of a year, we, we had $3.6 million less in revenue. We were using that revenue, and everybody wondered, well, where did all the money go? Well, we used a carryover for a few years that we had socked away and drained a lot of accounts and didn't do, we deferred a lot of stuff. But you don't replace $3.6 million worth of revenue easily. This, this change is, was about a two to two and a quarter million dollar change to our revenue that just evaporated.
Not to mention, the interest income was at eight, over $8 million. And now it's down to, well, it was one to two. So there's a $6 million loss there.
You rise and fall with the yield curve. Although we've seen the interest income as low as 900 and something thousand before. You're right, we were at 8.2, I think, at its highest. And over a period of five years, it dropped to just below $1 million. So we had a $7 million shift in revenue. Hence, there were some difficult decisions that needed to be made that were very unpopular. But when revenue evaporates and the bills continue, this, this isn't like being home and consolidating, taking, shutting down your cable and shutting down your telephone, and operations have to continue.
They'll got to deliver service.
The, you know, those services have to be produced.
Yep.
And they have to be paid for. So when the revenue evaporates, you have to take other, you have to take other ways of getting business done into consideration or replace the revenues. Quite frankly, whoever said you had to do more with less, they should take them out back and whoop them. Because if you're doing more with less, you weren't doing what you're supposed to do in the first place. All right? The, so, you know, we have, we've, we've worked smarter. We've rearranged a lot of things, but we come to a point sometimes where it's all about the money.
Unfortunately, we did have to do layoffs, too.
We did intend quite a few of them. And then we did a lot of years with no, no increases and so forth.
Put off capital projects. Now we're, now we're starting to pay for that, correct?
Right.
That's what most folks do. But eventually, you get to the point where that, that comes back on you, too. And we've, since, in the last two years, we've been trying to catch up with those issues. So, I mean, that's the way every business, every government goes through those cycles.
Right.
And we were just working through ours. But that revenue loss is, is significant.
Yeah, we lost, what, 15 million under the Kasich administration in local government funds during his term?
And well, I didn't expect the reduction, the constant reduction of local government.
Right.
I was talking about the big shift of, within the county...
Population.
Sure.
Where the, this percentage share changed. You're correct, it's 15 million. It's still counting, kind of.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it hasn't really come back.
Right.
No.
Yeah.
And every time...
And now the NEXUS line.
Well, the NEXUS line, I didn't comment on, but I remember meeting with those folks. And the big hype to keep people quiet in the community was the, how much money was going to be pumped into the various political subdivisions. They were out there with the spreadsheet, you know, getting people to be eager about the increase in revenues to keep the schools quiet, the smaller public communities quiet. There were some private folks that brought out, you know, made a lot of issues with that and that were affected, and some were affected significantly. There was one or two bigger communities that fought that.
Yeah.
But by far and large, the way they kept all the communities from getting together collectively banging on them...
Showing some money.
Was how much money they were going to pump into the community through this capital improvement and the increased revenue in the tax base.
Well, not just the tax base, but how much income tax for the build-out of it and all that. There was like a lot of inflated numbers.
So, somebody mentioned bait and switch. I think it was a bait and switch. I absolutely do.
It was.
I've met with these folks many, many times as this, this project was going on. And that was, that was the sell. That was the sheet that they were going around to everybody with. And look, here's the valuations, here's the money we're going to pay into these communities. You know, we think it's in the best interest of us and the communities, the partnership. And now the pipeline's built, and the partnership seems to be eroding very rapidly.
Mm-hmm.
It's obsolete.
Yeah. Modern-day medicine man show there.
Yes, it was.
Wow.
So, I know the, I talked to Sheriff this morning, and he contacted you this morning. Did we work that out, I hope?
I had some conversations, and he, he explained the reason why they had asked for the increase in funds. It had to do with shifting salaries, you know, employees coming off probation, raises, holidays, overtime. So their figures, our figures were based off 2019 budget. They were figuring based off of end of 2019. They kind of took a real-time look at. So that's why, that's why they're, the difference in calculation.
So the 3% increase in the salaries and the extra pay and all that, that we've anticipated for? Does that offset that extra?
They're saying that's, that's not, no, that's, that's why they're looking for that extra, those funds above and beyond that 3%, 1%. They're, they're saying that, again, that they're, they're looking at the end of 2019 where their salary levels are. And, you know, they, they mentioned some things like, once employees come off probation, they are, then they have uniform allowances. So there's different...
But that's not new.
No, it's not new. None of that's new.
It's not new. So this is a fluid document. I mean, you know, there are things that will pop up. We have things pop up with safety forces all the time. I think we have an amazing record compared to, I'm sure, other leaders in county government and the way they support their sheriff's department. I think we have a very strong record. And so, you know, we'll look at the issues as we move forward, but it's a fluid document for now, and we'll...
Yeah, I mean, had, had some of those, those issues are constantly evolving.
Right.
Correct.
They're not, they're not unique one-offs.
Correct.
The, and, and cost of raises are set by the, the union contracts, because we follow those contracts.
Right.
Well, he mentioned this morning, when I talked to him, about some, like, money in, money out type of scenarios where, like, at the end of the year, that's when they start getting some, was it for the...
Yeah, some different, some of the different communities. They mentioned there's a $45,000 check that you get at the end of the year that gets paid in, that they're paying those salaries out of his budget, but then they get reimbursed at the end of the year. So it just goes back to the general fund.
So it's not an additional need, it's just money in, money out, it's a wash.
Yeah, but those, I do those with the Board of Election all the time.
Right.
The, we do, we don't do them in the budget. We do them when the event occurs. The Board of Elections routinely will have additional costs because of a community's doing special levy or something like that, and there's overtime costs for workers, and those, they have to pay for that. And I work with the Director of the Board of Elections. He alerts me to what they're billing that community. And I know it's coming into reimbursables, and then we appropriate to their budget to do that work. So that, that's a fluid thing that goes on all the time. I wasn't aware that we were budgeting for that in the annual budget. I think those are separate events that we take one, one at a time.
Right.
Okay.
And I, I can speak to the fact, in just 10 months that I've been here, I know that whenever we've had a, a request from the sheriff's department, we take it seriously. We've been very supportive. And I, I don't see that position changing down the road.
No. Okay, well, like we said, it's a living, breathing document, and if things change, we look at those on an individual basis. So that's what we'll do.
Okay. Anything else for Casey? Nope?
No, I think, it's like you, we just...
Right.
We call an audible when we need to.
Right. Yeah, we never know what curveball Columbus is going to throw us, or someone's going to come down from the Fed. So we're adjusting all the time.
We'll be ready.
Calling audibles at the line all the time, so. Thanks, Casey.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on number 11? Okay, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Number 12, appoint Jonathan Reichel at Lorraine County, as, as Lorraine County's Apary Inspector for the year 2020. The total annual appropriation is $3,400 with a mileage reimbursement of 52 cents per mile.
So move.
Second?
Any discussion?
This is our county beekeeper, which according to Ohio Revised Code, we have to retain a county beekeeper. So when those big swarms of bees show up someplace...
Well, actually, you know, interestingly, it's, I'm sure, I'm assuming that may happen occasionally, but mostly, it's the health of the bees.
Right.
They're really important to certain agricultural pursuits, and, so, you know, they, they, there's a lot of need for, to monitor that in your community, especially in a, in a rural community as, as we are. So I always like when they come in once in a while. We see them every so often, and they come in and give a presentation. It's kind of neat stuff. But you're right, it is required by Higher Revised Code.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Number, number 13, authorize the creation of the Lorraine County Convention Facilities Authority per Ohio Revised Code 351.02.
So move.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Number 14, authorize the formation of the Lorraine County Complete Count Committee in reference to the 2020 census.
So move.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Number 15, under community development, award various contracts for homeowners to receive grant assistance for chip FY18 home repair and private rehabilitation activities for home repair and home rehabilitation assistance, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders.
So move.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
We did add that address in, correct?
Yes. Yes, we did.
We only had one. I was, I was wondering why it wasn't there. But you, you have the packet on that chip, right?
There was three.
Well, there was a couple on hold. I looked at one more before we went to the board. Okay. The, that was the last one.
One of them was missing an address, but I just looked it up by the permanent parcel number.
Yeah, I had one held that I had some questions on. I didn't send it over until late. So that's probably why I didn't want to get in there.
Okay. Number 16, approve and enter into a memo of, memorandum of understanding with Lorraine County Public Health for the provision of plumbing inspections in commercial and residential buildings on behalf of the Lorraine County Building Department.
So move.
Second?
Any discussion?
Can you explain that?
This is all prep work.
Okay.
The, this, this is required when you want to work with the Health Department. So Don and I had a conversation with Dave Kovell, and then this is just a completion of those conversations, so that they continue to do these things when the building department's up and running. This will be all part of the package. Once we get certified and we start operations, they're doing it right now. But...
But just to be clear, we're still waiting on the state's approval for our building department. It kind of makes it sound like we already have, have it in place here.
He can give you a quick update if you'd like.
Sure. Morning, Don.
Morning, Don.
Good morning, Board. Happy New Year and Merry Christmas, if I don't see you before...
Tomorrow.
The holidays, exactly. Well, I've been off on vacation for a little bit, but, yeah, this, with the, the MOU with the Health District and then the next are the last two acts from this board that will need to finish putting together our request for certification from the State of Ohio for our building department.
You've got to demonstrate that you can accomplish all the requirements.
Partnerships.
Right. And so, the Health District will, by statute for counties, has to provide the plumbing inspections. And so this MOU satisfies that.
Okay.
And then actually, on the next one, it'll be the, the contract will, originally, it'll be our employees that will be submitting. But ultimately, these are the backup inspectors and CBO, the, the key staff of the building department, so we can demonstrate to the state that we have the capability to provide the services required.
It's going to take us a while to, to ramp into what we're doing, but the work is going to begin immediately. Until we're certified, I see no, no reason to have staff that can't perform anything.
Correct, no.
So, these, these companies provide the solution by having qualified inspectors that we can assign to the projects to go out. The, the original thinking, when Don and I was, were sitting down and talking about this, is I didn't want to be with one company. I wanted to be with a few, so that we had a, a good depth of resources available. You know, through the public meetings, I heard some of the concerns on timeliness, getting people, inspectors out there in a reasonable time, not just, like, reasonable time of not just, like reasonable time of day.
Right.
When needed. And I didn't want to have one company that may be not able to meet the demands of good service in our community, so we're going to just go to the phone, to the rolodex, and whoever happens to be able to perform that when we need it performed is going to get assigned to work. I will tell you, none of them were completely happy with that, they all wanted to be exclusive to us and, you know, and do all that, get a big contract, but I think this is going to work a little better for us, a little easier to manage, so that we have additional resources. You know, the first several months we do this is going to be the time when we're either going to finally win over some acceptance, or we're going to prove that those folks were right. I don't want to prove they were right.
So, once the final submission to the state, what timeframe are we looking at?
We're looking at probably, they only meet once a month, so January, February probably get the certification, so March, we would begin then, I think, to really take a look at rolling out and providing full services as soon as end of April.
Well, sometime in the spring. We had targeted January, February timeframe, but a couple of the puzzle pieces didn't exactly fit where they needed to. And we'll know, we'll know going into the meeting whether there's any, if the state's going to be in contact with us on the other side. We'll have a good feel for whether our pieces are coming together where they want them to, and that'll give us a lead in to start advertising for a chief building inspector and do those things. We hope, although we have a contingency for, we hope to have a chief building inspector on board once we start up. But if we don't, we have, there's resources already being contracted for you that can fill that role on a temporary basis, but our desire would be to start with that and some administrative support for the department. I still have a couple ideas where I want to locate the department, I haven't run those by you yet, so it doesn't have a home yet, and so, those are things we need to talk about, we do have some solutions to that. But clearly, it's a bad fit for this building, for the type of business and the traffic it's going to have. So, Don and I have been working on a few of those issues, and so we'll work through them all.
And that was chief, not cheap, right?
Never cheap.
It won't be cheap.
Like cheap.
No.
Sorry, that's the New York accent. They get older, they get mush-mouthed more, and it's just kind of, the, these folks are in high demand, they're hard to come by.
They are.
Most communities have to actively seek them out and compensate them generously.
Or they share.
Or they share, but the sharing part...
And the service.
Has caused significant problems for communities before, not all, but some, but hopefully, we'll be able to work through most of that.
Okay, great, thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Number seventeen, authorize the acceptance of proposals for professional consulting services for the Lorraine County Building Department from Associated Consulting Solutions LLC in Mentor, Ohio, Inspection Solutions LLC Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and Safe Built in Bedford Heights, Ohio. They would provide commercial residential plan review services, inspection services, and backup building official services by an experienced expert as required by Ohio Board of Building Standards.
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
I just want to point out, the, you know, you see Pennsylvania, you see Mentor. What these folks do is they contract with people that are very close to your community. We're not going to have an inspector driving away from Pennsylvania to come here. They have a depth of resources, they have consultants on their payroll that are in lots of geographical areas. So I don't want somebody picking this up going, well, why are you bringing people in from Pittsburgh to do work? Most of these folks are going to be located in and about Lorraine County, northeast Ohio, in the contingent, excuse me, in the adjacent counties, but they won't be coming from Pennsylvania.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Job and Family Services, number eighteen, authorize various personnel in 2020 to utilize the various credit cards not to exceed $4,000. Said usage is for work-related expense, food, transportation, gas, and oil, motor vehicle repair and maintenance, conference, telephone, and lodging.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Number nineteen, Children's Services, authorize various personnel in Lorraine County Children's Services Department to utilize the agency's Master Cards for the year 2020 not to exceed $2,500.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Engineer, number twenty, award contract to Kelston Incorporated Shelby, Ohio in the amount of $149,750 for the 2020 Brentwood Lake wastewater treatment plant disinfection conversion. This was the only bid received and will be paid by sanitary capital equipment account.
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
Jerry, I mean, this is the only bid we received, and I guess we already checked to make sure that it wasn't in excess of what we thought this cost was going to be. I just get concerned when we only receive one bid and that's the one we move forward with.
I don't know if Jerry can answer, I can't answer, I haven't...
Now, normally, when you only receive one bid, you have an idea as to...
Estimate.
But I guess this is for... I always thought there were guardrails around this, that it couldn't exceed like 10% of what you thought the project was going to be.
There's probably an engineer's estimate cost and expected cost. The, a lot of times, unless it's something so exceptional, we normally don't accept one bid. It's rare.
Right.
But...
It was 10%, it was within the 10% required.
It was within the 10%, okay.
The...
Yeah, the clerk had the document, it was within the 10%.
Yes.
Okay. I just, it always makes me nervous, so...
Okay.
Okay, we're good then.
Any further discussion?
A lot of people that do that kind of work.
Probably are, no, right.
Okay. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Okay. Is there any public comment for today?
Public comment, if you'll please come forward. Three minutes for your comment. It's a practice and a policy we've had for over 30 years, despite what some people want to say.
No, you're good.
You're good. Some people want to claim it for their own.
Elyria City Council taught me, a little toughly. Teresa Shea, 519 East Avenue, to the commissioners and the rest of you. For years and years, I have met very, various people who in Elyria, in Elyria, that sought impossible changes and spent a long time working on it. Pauline Lobota stopped a company from dumping chemicals in the air and water. Vivian Jamison observed and reported a chemical dumping on land by the river and stopped it. Norm Failing sought new water and sewer pipes for our infrastructure in Elyria and the redoing of Middle Avenue. They all had a dream of an impossible change and a better place and spread that dream, as did many others. My dream, as you know, is of an effective bus and train system. You all know, not of a town and county that ignores an important issue. All these people I mentioned and more, some saw a change and some laid the layer that brought about the change. In a place like Elyria, which is what I speak for, I meet people who have to walk 10 blocks to buy food at a drugstore and try to carry it home. It is hard but necessary to carry heavy groceries in multiple backpacks for a more expensive price. People are walking on my street, many blocks to get to downtown, now that the weather's like this, maybe you'll think of that, but still have bad shoes and are cold. Homeless people with no gloves have no way to get help. I am here, crystal clear, asking not to be placated. The one thing I learned from the pioneers of our city, people who protected us and planned, exposed, and shouted for more, Pauline Lobota, Vivian Jamison, and Norm Failing, is to persist until others see your vision and dream. I see buses taking people to work and to buy food, easy transportation, city to city, but first of all, commissioners who prioritize and look at their funds first, bad day to bring it up, but of all of the people, they forget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Others wishing to participate in public comment this morning? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you. We have a couple late pieces of business, one of them is the King Ditch Restoration Phase Three that we need to get on, that we didn't get on the board, here's from Peter and the engineer's cost. I would ask that we do that.
Yeah, so this one, I see we got five bids on that one, so...
And a safe margin on that.
Payable through stormwater.
Yes, so we just get an authorization for that, we'll move that forward, that's what you want to write, Don?
They want to start by January 6th.
Well, it's good, when the ground's frozen, a lot of the ditch, a lot of the ditch work is really, people think you can't do it in the wintertime. Best time is early winter, or late winter, to do this type of work, the ground's frozen.
It's not sloppy, right?
You don't make as much, you don't have as much damage to the ground, the leaves and everything is defoliated from trees, you got a better view. And that big equipment sometimes that they use, frozen ground ain't going to stop that equipment. So, the restoration of the area is flawless, when we can get in there when the conditions are right.
Good.
Okay.
Good. Want to make a motion?
Make the motion for the King Ditch Restoration Phase Three. There were five bids received, and the recommendation is to accept the lowest and best bid of Mark's Construction Incorporated in the amount of $73,658.64.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Don, do you need this talkative opportunity grant application done?
Actually, we had sent this down to the board just for consideration, we're looking to acquire a consulting service to assist in the three building owners in downtown Wellington to come up with an estimate to rehab their building. Typically, these smaller projects, a contractor would just do it, but the problem is if we use a contractor to do that, those building owners, that contractor cannot bid on the work, and this is for...
What this is though?
Oh, this is a, I'm sorry, this is a grant to, we'd be making with Wellington Village and Downtown Main Street to bring in state CDBG funds to assist local, three local business owners to improve their buildings. The grant would pay for 50% of the rehabilitation of the building, and then we would be marrying that with our downtown revital, downtown loan program that we've created for the villages, and have those funds available to allow these building owners to improve their buildings and get them ready and improved for occupancy.
Is that similar to what we did in Amherst, that the 300,000 improvement turned into a million?
Very similar, smaller scale, but very similar.
A lot of times, if we don't do a separate contract to do the design work that's necessary for the application, that precludes some of the locals from bidding on the project because they're prevented from doing that. The, were we going to take this out of our micro program?
It would be ineligible expense to go from there, and that was one of the things we could...
Yeah, because we have that program for those villages.
Right, to be able to use it.
So the resolution is, in the matter of authorizing the administrator of Lorraine County to enter into a contract with a pre-qualified consultant to perform design services for three downtown buildings located within Wellington, Ohio.
Correct, and we'd be going off our statement of qualifications that we collect annually.
Well, this will just finish the year with the year of Wellington.
Yeah, they have been like in the news.
They've been incredibly active, they've been a good partner.
Okay, was stated, that would be, I'll move to accept that motion.
Okay, and I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Outside of wishing everybody a happy holiday, this will be our last meeting until almost the middle of January.
Yeah, right.
I noticed that we've done the annual resolutions, I'll make sure the county stays safe, my first one will probably be a pay raise for the administrator.
He tries that every year.
Yeah, I get caught every year.
They catch you.
Every year, every year. But not everybody has it as good as everybody else, so be kind and generous. Don't just walk by those people that are out there ringing the bell and other folks that are trying to help the needy, because when you help others, you help yourself.
Yep.
Happy holidays, everybody, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
Mr. Petticord would like to come over and discuss with you a pending litigation matter in executive status.
How much does he want us to settle for this time?
More than you're going to want.
Thanks for the great holiday spirit news.
Happy New Year, count on you, Jerry.
Ms. Kukowski?
All right, well, last Wednesday, Commissioner Sveda and I attended the Mexican Mutual Scholarship Fund fundraiser at Mexican Mutual, and they had great food and fellowship, as always, at that event. Thursday, I attended the re-entry coalition meeting, which was held at Goodwill of Lorraine County, and they have a couple things going on there that are, that's kind of new. Every third Wednesday, from 10 to 1 o'clock, they have a food pantry, and it's at 145 Keep Court in Elyria, if you're not familiar with where they are. They also have job readiness and job re-entry programs at that location. If you're interested in finding out how to get a resume, cover letters, job search, interview skills, all that type of thing, also 145 Keep Court, and you can call Rick Hernandez at 440-244-3174. And also, he's doing free computer training, both at that location and in Lorraine on West Erie Avenue at 201 West Erie. So if you want to learn Word or Outlook, Excel, PowerPoints, things like that, you can also call Rick about that. Citizen Circle meets the fourth Tuesday of every month, and that's for people coming out of prison or jail that need help with all kinds of different things, like housing, transportation, job readiness, all those kinds of things. So, they meet at the Amy Levin Center on 254, and I don't have the address in front of me, but you can call my office if you need to find out more about that. From there, we all attended North Ridgeville's Chamber of Commerce Christmas luncheon, it was a very nice event. After that, we had a meeting regarding the census for 2020 and the importance of making sure everyone is counted, and they are also looking for workers, so if you're interested in a part-time job, you can go to their website, which is 2020census.gov/jobs. Saturday, we all attended the man-to-man support group at Mercy Cancer Center, and always, they have great food and a great support system there for people that have survived prostate cancer. Sunday, I spent most of the day with Santa. First was pancakes with Santa at Commissioner Sveda's event, and then on to our Transportation Center, where Santa was there to welcome all the children and their families. They also had trolley rides, food, and our staff went above and beyond to make this a great success. I want to thank them and congratulate them on such a great job that they did, and hopefully, it'll be even bigger and better next year. Yesterday, Commissioner Sveda and I attended the recovery court graduation, and it was very, very inspiring morning as we watched five young women with over a year of sobriety get their lives back. They finished the program, they got jobs, they got GEDs, they got their driver's licenses, but most of all, they got their families back and are now giving back, by reaching out to others who are struggling like they were and showing them hope. There were a lot of happy tears yesterday, and the room was packed with both treatment teams, families, and future participants that will hopefully see that it is possible to get their lives back too, so it was really great. And it's like, as said, this is our last meeting, so I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a very safe and Happy New Year. End of my report.
Yeah, it wasn't able to make the recovery court, but you know, every chance we get, we remind people that, you know, addiction is a brain disorder, and it's a very challenging road when you try to make it through recovery, and you know, still, it's important people realize that alcohol is still a leading issue when it comes to addiction. Had the opportunity to attend a luncheon in North Ridgeville with my colleagues for the North Ridgeville Chamber of Commerce. Always a nice group of business professionals there, and they do a lot of good things in the community. Everybody had to bring a toy and drop that off, but always a great group of people, and they really do a good thing for the business community there in North Ridgeville. As was pointed out, we had a chance to meet with some representatives with the Census Bureau. You will be reading about, as we approved today, a complete count committee. That's an initiative where we're bringing together governmental leaders, we're bringing together faith-based leaders, school system leaders, business leaders throughout the community, we want to make sure that everyone is counted. It's very important, obviously, you know, states lose congressional representation if they don't have people properly counted. They need to make sure that they're counted, that they're counted once and counted at the right place. And you know, we have challenging issues, obviously, in our society, where sometimes the kids are with mom one day, if the parents are divorced, and sometimes they're with the dad another day, and so, you know, those are, that's just an example of how challenging it can be trying to make sure you get a proper count of everybody, whether they're with somebody at one time or with the other, they can only be counted once. But also at stake is federal dollars and federal programs, based upon census data, about $1,800 per person. So, we want to make sure that everybody is properly counted in the community. We will be meeting with community leaders in early January, is that January 9th, Don?
Yes.
Is the date, January 9th, at the Community College in the morning? And letters are going out to all the community leaders to bring them in, so that we can be certified and recognized by the Census Bureau as having a complete count committee, and we'll work on that throughout the year. I believe the window opens up in April, runs through the end of August. So, we need everybody's help, make sure people are properly, properly counted. I can't say enough good things about the Man-to-Man Prostate Cancer Survivor Group, they meet each year for the holidays, and it's just so important, you know, we as men can be pretty stubborn, none of us like going to the doctor, but it's really important to, you know, get your regular checkups and get to your doctor if you feel that there's a problem going on. Also enjoyed meeting with Santa on multiple occasions on Sunday as well, too. First at a pancake breakfast that Sherry had put together, a nice event over there in Lorraine. And I didn't sit on Santa's lap, I did take a picture and...
You had a request.
I'm a little too big, yeah, yeah, my request was that the Cleveland Indians win the World Series, which Santa has not come through with for a long time, and I try to be as nice as I can possibly be, but that still hasn't worked out. And also, I can't say enough good things about the amazing dedicated employees that we have here at the county, and a lot of our staff was there to meet, when we had the meet Santa at the Transportation Center on Sunday. It's amazing how the elves look just like people who work here, but they must have a part-time job with Santa or something, but it worked out really well, and Sandy, thank you for all your efforts in putting that together, and it's just, it's just always cool seeing all the kids and, you know, meeting with Santa. Of course, there's always some kids that want no part of Santa, you know, even if mom's going to go with them or dad, they just want no part of Santa, and I think I remember at one stage of life being a little afraid of Santa, but nonetheless, it was a, yeah, it was last year, thank you, Lauren. It was last year. But thank you to all of them, it was a very, very nice community event, and if you have not had the opportunity to be inside or see our Transportation Center, we hope that you'll take a look at it sometime. It's also, you know, a great facility for community events and weddings and things of that nature, too. So, we try to utilize it as much as possible. That completes my report, I'll just say, happy holidays to everyone, and you know, be thankful for what you have. Yeah, there are a lot of people who don't have much and kind of live meal to meal, so I think, as Jim pointed out earlier, this is the time of year that hopefully you go the extra mile, but we should be doing that as much as possible throughout the course of the year, too. That completes my report.
Well, before I give my report, which is a little different today, but I would like to address Ms. Shea, because it seems as though her visits occur right after I've attended something that is moving us forward in the direction of solving transportation. We know it's going to be a small, it's going to take small steps, but it doesn't mean folks aren't working on it. Those folks that she mentioned and gave credit to in her report, I'm certain had many of unproductive hours before they came up with solutions, but to share with everyone, our administrator, Jim Cordez, is working with the food banks so that we can provide transportation stops, not just for those who are recipients of food bank food at the libraries, but anybody in the community. food bank food at the libraries, but anybody in the community. So we're going to try to facilitate the embodiment of folks receiving food, having transportation, not having to walk with grocery bags. And while, again, it may be a baby step, that may be a big step in somebody's life. So just on that note, I brought Santa's good list for this year. I thought that it would be important to talk about all the good things that, and folks that Santa has on his list for this year. So here's the list I have for 2019. Our County 4-H, who celebrated their 100th anniversary, 100 men of Lorraine County who just had their, their annual holiday party, 100 women of Lorraine County. It's a group I belong to. They raised $10,000 each quarter and give it to a deserving county nonprofit. The beekeepers had their 100th anniversary, and we talked about the ecological importance of maintaining our bees. Big Brothers Big Sisters, Boys and Girls Club, Columbia Community Foundation, El Centro, Grafton Midview Library, who celebrated 75 years, Hearts of Patriots, Kiwanis, Elyria Kiwanis celebrated 100 years, Lakata, LCCAA, Dr. Ballinger and LCC that continues to give back in so many ways to our community and our young adults. Thank you to the Lorraine Club of Negro Business and Professional Women. They gave me a special award this year for that. I am thankful. Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce, Lorraine County Health and Dentistry, Lorraine County Job and Family Services, the Lorraine County Labor Agency, Lorraine County Drug, Juvenile, and Veterans Courts, Lorraine County Metro Parks, the Lorraine County Sheriffs, the Lorraine County Visitor Bureau, 911, all local law enforcement and first responders, Lorraine County Rising, Lorraine County Urban League, League of Women Voters, Oberlin Area, our Port Authorities, Move Lorraine County, the New Main Street in Lorraine, Marie Ridge Center, NAACP, the Nord Foundation, our North Coast Mayors, Hunter, Zilka, and Jensen. We have Oberlin Community Services, Oberlin Rotary, Operation Open Heart. We have Prosecutor's Office. We have the Second Harvest Food Bank, Fowler Home, Veterans Administration, so many things, good things, and work being done this past year there. All of our VFW posts who continue to serve our veterans. It was the year of Wellington, and it looks like it's going to continue. Congratulations to the cities of Lorraine, North Ridgeville, Elyria, where they have new mayors coming in in 2020. I want to thank the villages and townships who have welcomed my visits and my participation. A big shout out to our tremendous staff and everybody who helps to make the county run so smoothly. To Jerry Ennis, who doesn't keep us out of trouble, but defends us when we're there. To our county administrator, Jim Cordez. I don't know anybody who works harder. And to my colleagues, where we always share a common goal. We listen to each other's solutions, ideas, and suggestions for how to achieve that goal, and we always end up able to speak in a collective voice. So I'm looking forward to 2020. I hope it's an even more productive year for all of the folks. I hope I didn't miss anybody, and I hope everyone has a great holiday. Thank you. The pipeline is on Santa's bad list.
Yeah, there you go. Thanks. Okay. Remember, Santa's got to check that list twice, so that's, yeah.
Twice. And if I missed anyone, I know Santa knows who you are. He'll find you.
Right.
Okay. Well, we have a lot of meetings coming up in January, so I'm just going to kind of go through the list here. The first meeting of the year will be January 13th, and that will be the Commissioners' Organizational Meeting. Also, on January 13th at 11:00 a.m. will be the Transportation Improvement District Meeting. And the Land Bank meeting is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, January 16th at 10:00 a.m. On January 21st at 9:30 a.m. will be the Stormwater District Meeting. On January 22nd at 9:30 a.m. will be a regular Commissioners' Board Meeting. January 28th at 11:00 a.m. will be the Investment Advisory Meeting. And just making a note here that the State of Ohio Mileage reimbursement for 2020 will be 52 cents. Board Correspondents?
I would move that the reading be waived.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
Okay. That's our last meeting of the year. I did mention to you on Facebook, I know it has that automatic mechanism. It always triggers every Wednesday, so we can make sure we adjust that. And if anybody's already seen that on Facebook, I just want to confirm we are not meeting on Christmas Day next Wednesday.
Correct.
And then we won't be meeting until our organizational meeting then on the 13th. So seeing other business at this time, I would move that we go into executive session for the reasons stated by the county administrator and the assistant county prosecutor.
And I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.